Chambers at 6:00 P.M. We do not have any of the multiple kind of attendance, but next up is public comment. So you know there's what a two second delay, David? All right. Um, questions on the agenda? Very none, we move to our public hearing. On the 2024 budget. So I hereby open. This 2024 budget hearing at 6:00 P.M. Barnes, please proceed.
Excuse me, thank you, Your Honor. And 2024 budget as proposed is balanced and it totals one hundred and forty-four million point eight. Forty-four million eight hundred thousand dollars. The Illinois State Statute requires that city conduct a public hearing to obtain taxpayer comments prior to the adoption of the budget. Public hearing notice was published in the Statch newspaper on Monday, October 30th, 2023. Proposed budget document is available for public inspection on the city's website as well as in the Finance Department. Subsequent to the public hearing tonight, City Council reserves the right to revise, modify, alter, increase, or decrease items contained in the proposed budget ordinance without further hearing or notice. Over the last seven months, you've had many work sessions. And informationals on items that are now incorporated into the 24 budget. And the budget actually began way last May. When council conducted their annual strategic planning session, they began updating the 24 through 26 priorities. Council also authorized at that time community survey to help gain input from all of our citizens. In June, departments started working on their budgets. And in July, the council adopted the three-year CIP plan. And the main reason we did that so early was so that we could give engineering an opportunity to get out front of design and to start fitting on projects for the upcoming fiscal year. In August, we held a lot of meetings, as you can see listed there, but the main thing is, is that we approved the Evergreen Plankton Comp Study. Effective this fall and fully funded over the next three years. And that is um. A program that had been in the process for more than a year. In September, we adopted the new Level Up Program. And in October, we adopted modest fee increases for three of our enterprise funds to help maintain financial stability in those bonds. In October, we also adopted. On the enhanced rental housing program, which is 100% fee-driven. And on October the 17th, we proposed a balanced budget for council's consideration. We also held two budget work sessions in October, one full day on Saturday, October the 21st, as well as two weeks ago on October the 24th. And then that brings us forward into tonight. Which we are now conducting the public hearing, which is required by state statute. And again, we're trying to gather input from our citizens. We will also be having the third and final budget work session here following the public hearing. And before you tonight is potentially to adopt the 24 through 26 strategic plan. And then we hope to finalize the budget adoption by November the 21st, as well as bringing forward the amended 23 budget. Following those first two budget work sessions, the balance as presented is balanced. And it's one hundred and forty-four point eight million dollars. It maintains the city's. Strong financial foundation. With healthy fund balances and cash reserves across all funds within city policy. It continues conservative operating spending and sound financial planning. And invests very heavily in citywide infrastructure, particularly in streets, water, and sanitary sewer improvements. Budget also aligns with the council's strategic plan and the three pillars of infrastructure, quality of place, and the economy. Highlights of the budget. Include it funds all of city's utility services and authorized personnel. Twenty-nine percent of the budget is comprised of salaries and benefits. Of about forty-six million dollars. And a couple of the highlights in the salaries and benefits category is that this budget does fund eleven new full-time positions. Bet of cost-saving ideas for a total of about three hundred and seven thousand dollars. It also assumes a 6.5% vacancy rate. Citywide capital improvements and capital equipment total thirty-seven million and make up about 23% of the budget. Debt service is about nine percent, and most of the debt service is going to be retired within seven to eleven years. Very nice rapid payout on the debt. The remaining fifty-five million dollars or 35% is comprised of our operating expenditures. And average only 1.3% increase from our amended 23 budget, so it is a very conservative budget from an operating standpoint. Five of the council's top priorities that were identified during strategic planning and funded in the 24 budget include the following. Number one. Increased funding for citywide infrastructure CIP projects. We had a PCI report, which is our Pavement Edition Index. And that report suggested that we need to increase annual CIP money of about two to three million dollars to be making progress. And the 2024 budget includes one million dollars of increased street maintenance paid through property taxes, cannabis taxes, and other new revenue streams. And with the new 10-year plan that we are going to be talking about later tonight. We hope that by 2026, that one million will grow to two million dollars. By 2032, it'll grow to three million dollars, and over the course of the 10 years, we should be able to. Uh, we should be able to fund more than twenty million dollars of additional CIP projects. Again, that was the council's number one priority. Number two on the list was to implement an enhanced rental housing program for multifamily and single-family homes. And we adopted an ordinance October of 23. And the 24 budget includes funding for an enhanced rental housing program effective January 1 of 24. That is 100% fee-driven and includes additional inspectors, administrative staff, and operating costs to fully support the program. And for 2024, that amounts to a little more than three hundred thousand dollars. The next item is to provide funding for the improved compensation and class plan. That particular plan is was wanted because so that we could improve the employee pension and enhanced application clause. The 24 budget includes the first phase of implementation, the total plan is in excess of eight hundred thousand dollars, and when fully funded. It will again fund eight hundred thousand dollars over the next three years. The next item on the list was to develop a 10-year plan to provide funding for special capital projects. This plan will begin funding projects identified and prioritized by council. That previously have been unfunded. Projects will include riverfront and downtown improvements. We hired MKSK to develop a plan. That we hope to be hearing back with them in about a year from now. It will help fund projects for quality-of-life projects for parks and libraries, economic development projects citywide. City-owned building improvements at City Hall and the central virus station. And it will help provide funding for private public partnerships with our city match. The new revenue sources considered for 2024 include a 5% amusement tax effective January 1 of 24. And a natural gas and electric franchise fee of 1.5% effective February 1 of 24. The 2024 budget includes projects and funding totaling five point one million dollars. Which could grow to potentially eighty million dollars over the next ten years. And the last item on this list was to do a review of the fee structure of all four of our enterprise funds. And the 2024 budget includes modest increases in WPC. Stormwater and sanitation to ensure the future financial stability in each one of those funds. Highlights on the revenue, total revenue equals one hundred and forty-four million dollars. And the number one revenue stream is our intergovernmental revenue, which is about 25% of our total stream. And that is all of our state shared revenue from the state as well as federal and state grants. Number two on the list is all of our charges for services, largely utility fees for each of our local funds. The third item is other city taxes, the home rental sales tax, hotel motel, prepared food and beverage. And then number four is our property taxes, which equal about 11% of the revenue stream. We are very fortunate that we have a very diversified revenue stream in the city. Because this helps guard against potential budget shortfall, preventing one revenue stream fall short, the other ones are are there to help fill that gap. Like I said a minute ago, our intergovernmental revenue is the largest revenue stream of about thirty-six point four million dollars or 25%. The 2024 budget proposes several new revenue streams. We project about five hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars for rental housing fees that will help support. A hundred percent of the enhanced rental housing program that was adopted by council. We project approximately half a million dollars in amusement taxes to help support the new special capital projects fund, and that is about 5%. And then about nine hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars for natural gas and electric franchise fee. And that will be to help support the new capital projects fund as well. And we tentatively will be implementing 1.5% February 1 of 24. Property taxes make up about 11.3% of the total revenue stream. And for 2024, council is considering taking 50% of the projected growth in EAV. And increasing property taxes to fund additional street improvements. Again, that's the council's number one priority, and 100% of those increased taxes would go towards CIP. Total property taxes levied are supposed to increase from fifteen million eight hundred thousand up to sixteen million three hundred and forty-six thousand and twenty-four. With five hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars of those taxes being allocated directly towards CIP projects. And this next slide, I hope show this. Again, highlighted in yellow is the 100% of the increased taxes are going towards CIP projects, five hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. For 2024, if you follow that column down the row, there's the total taxes of sixteen million three hundred and forty-six thousand six ninety-six. And it's an increase of five hundred and twenty-seven thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars over the current year. Were a total increase of about 3.33%. Additionally, on this page, you'll see the SSA 5 and 6, those individual boards approved their budgets. They have opted to increase their taxes in excess of 105% this year. And because of that, we held truth in taxation hearings on both October 17th and October 18th. And the SSA 5 board adopted their total property taxes at one hundred and twelve thousand four seventy-five. And SSA 6 at two hundred and sixty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars. The 23 tentative EAV collectible in 24 totals nine hundred and nineteen million seven hundred and seventy-four thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars. And that is up about sixty-three point five million dollars or 7.4% over 22 to the current year. That growth in the EAV is attributed largely due to the citywide increased revaluations assigned by the county assessment. If we break it out by category, residential increased an average of about 8.8%. And commercial property increased about 3.7%. And one of the key things to point out here, it's a bullet down. Is that even though property taxes are increasing, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. The levy rate is projected to decrease approximately 7.025 cents due to the increased valuations. The city's levy rate is projected to decrease from the current one dollar to 0.8475 in 23. Down to 1.77725 in 24. And this is prior to assessments. And. We got to thinking today and we look back, that levy rate of 1.77. Is the lowest in 34 years, we went back to 1990. The second lowest compared to now was in 1998, and it was one a dollar eighty, 1.80. Thought that I would point that out. If you look in the green box then for total property tax revenue, breakdown is new construction is bringing in about seventy-eight thousand. Available taxes from the tip eight and nine that are are closing, it's about fourteen thousand. And the remaining four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars is coming from this new. Due to the revaluations. The average impact from these properties, tax increases are as follows. This is an average impact on a home, residential home of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, so if your home is bigger, it's going to be a little more, if it's a. If it's if it's less valuation, it will be less, but the average increase is twenty-five dollars a year. On the commercial side, on an average commercial property at six hundred and eighty-two thousand, it's actually a decrease of eleven dollars. And just for the public to know that during all of our budget deliberations, we tried to find a balance with residential properties going. The growth in residential properties exceeding commercial, we had to find a balance, and that 1.78. Levy rate appears to come close to finding a balance, increasing in residential, but some tax savings for commercial property. And we talked about modest increases to utility fees, the WPC storm and sanitation. And the wastewater treatment plant fees that were adopted in October will increase about three dollars and thirty-five cents per month. The last increase that we've seen in this fund is back in 2018. And the main reason that we are doing this, it is mandated by EPA for construction improvements in South Slope, as well as to help fill budget gaps that are. That are upcoming. Our stormwater fees, we see an increase to a medium-sized lot, again, this is average usage on a medium-sized lot. About a dollar forty-six per month. Prior to last year, the last increase had been 2005 for this fund, so again, we're trying to fill the budget gaps. And with sanitation, prior to last year, the last increase was 2018, and the increase that we are proposing is about 71 cents per month. And again, just to emphasize that these proposed increases will help fill budget gaps due to ongoing increase to operator and capital expenditures, and they are necessary to maintain financial stability in each utility funds. Monthly utility billing is targeted now for implementation in 24, we're hoping here by the first, end of the first quarter that we will be ready to go. And ongoing fees will be reviewed annually by council, so that we don't have gaps of five, six, ten years before we will be able to. But just in summary then on the fees, the proposed increases again on average residential property, which is about one hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. With average usage. Is as follows. And we're going to look right down that 24-year, that's the main focus here for adopting the budget, and property taxes will be going up two dollars and eight cents a month. Natural gas and franchise fees at the one and a half percent, effective February 1 of 24 would be two dollars and forty-seven cents. For a total combined property taxes and franchise fees of four dollars and fifty-five cents. Those two revenue streams will help largely fund the increased CIP program that we're talking about. Next group are the utility fees, the WPC is three dollars and thirty-five cents per month. There is no increase proposed for water for 24. Stormwater is a dollar forty-six a month, and sanitation is 71 cents. The total utility fee going up five dollars and fifty-two cents, or about ten dollars and seven cents per month. On an annual basis, that equates to a hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-eight cents on average. Again, based on the usage, based on the value of your home, those will fluctuate. And I just want to emphasize one more time that the proposed increases are necessary to maintain financial stability in each of the utility funds. And to work towards enhancing the CIP project line, funding up to two to three million dollars a year. On the expenditure side, again, total expenditures are 144 million, the top three categories of spending. Number one is our public safety, all of our police and fires is the largest bucket. The second bucket is all of our utility fees, all of our business type, and then number three is our capital projects. Highlights of our capital projects. In addition to capital improvements and equipment, total thirty-seven million three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. And that's broken down as follows, about seventeen and a half million dollars goes for streets, water, and sanitation sewer projects and various road maintenance. Six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is allocated for parks projects. And fourteen million for capital equipment and other improvements, including 3.1 million dollars for South Slope. Six hundred thousand dollars for cybersecurity in our water, water department. 2.2 million dollars in replacement vehicles and fleet. And two million dollars in flood protection at the Illinois 92 tip. And then 5.1 million dollars is for special capital projects. We also have 5.3 million dollars allocated for ARPA. And you can see all those highlights for 24, the largest one being Arsenal Bridge Decking, and again, the flood protection at the Tiff Illinois 92 corridor. And we are on target, we hope to potentially spend all of the money by the end of 25, but it could go into 26, we have to have all the money spent before December 31st of 26. And then finally, this is a summary of what was published in the paper, we have 52 funds. That comprise the entire city budget, with the largest bucket of spending being the general fund at 49 million dollars. And again, the total budget is 144 million dollars.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barnes, anything further? If you have any answer questions, if you have questions. Questions from the council. Hearing none, is there any testimony from those in favor of the budget as presented in the public? Hearing none, is there any testimony from those in opposition to the budget? Are there any other questions or statements? Great, hearing none, this budget hearing is closed at 6:25 P.M. Thank you very much, Ms. Barnes. As usual, you break it all down for us. And over time, you know, we've absorbed it, and I hope that all the council is getting out there and discussing this with us and some. Planning to disintegrate. Thank you. All right, so we move to our town agenda items, the first one is a resolution authorizing Ameris City Clerk. Executing a test to a professional services agreement to provide consulting services, Retail Strategies LLC to provide consulting services for retail and restaurant.
I'll take this along with you. Just in general, so the council is aware of it, a retail strategy orientation that the city of Moline contracted with. Prior to the pandemic, for many years, and had great success in working with them and attracting retail development along the shot of your corridor as well as in the regrow of the mall. So absolutely having the ability to do that type of outreach and attend the events, shows, meeting with retailers. That's primarily what they did, so with that, Chris negotiated this contract with speaking contract.
So as you can see, it's a three-year contract early, where it weighs about a fifty thousand dollar cost in year one, forty-five thousand in years two or three. But really, you can think of it as something where each year we're going to have a chance to get out of it, we can evaluate, and of course, we'll. So we can get out of it after each year or three, if we want to do that. One thing I will say about this group is the first thing that we'll do is they'll come, come back to our city, meet with city staff, really evaluate the signs, get, take a tour of the city, so they can really see all the areas in the city. We know that most of the deals they're going to cover are going to be on your road or for your mall or zip the areas, but they know that I want to show them neighborhood commercial areas, I want to show them downtown. So, you know, we could get lucky and strike a deal in other areas too, so they'll be coming here to do that analysis, and they'll, we'll have regular updates with them here on film, but. Primarily, they go to Chicago and Las Vegas and those type of trade shows, and they're there to represent us, not just retailers, restaurants. There's certain uses that they honestly don't look for, like car washes, payday loans, things that we don't need, right? But they'll be out there recruiting retailers and restaurants and chains like that.
Yeah, thank you, further questions from the council?
I was going to ask a question on the track, but I don't even care, as long as we're doing some kind of stab in the right direction for salad partner and. Part of these empty moments we have, it's worth it, it's worth a try.
Yeah, so we had them in the era, in the era when we had Panda Express going and down there. You know, Popeyes went, Olive Garden went, and so, you know, that, they were back here in that era, sometimes it's hard to come down exactly, he's cutting that deal, right? But I mean, they're out there at those trade shows and they'll be giving us regular updates, I know they told us that they already have a couple bikes of things, or maybe bikes start working, so. Hopefully, we can get that done.
He actually answered my question, because I was going to ask what type of businesses they previously had brought in.
Thank you, was that the only time we've ever worked with them?
Yeah, it's been a previous three-year contract. So that would have been like Bob said before COVID.
And was the reason we stopped was COVID or?
Um, I think there was some staff change in that timeframe, so when you had some staff turnover, you also have that contract coming due. And of course, going into COVID, there was a lot of cost-saving measures that also happened, so. You know, there's, there's a real tax base benefit to it as well, so you can look at it at that cost, but you're making an investment. Always in business, a little bring your tax base up on a permanent basis. Motion to approve.
Again, motion by Schmidt, second by Castro, further discussion from the council. Thank you very much, Mr. Sines, if there's nothing further, all in favor, opposed, question passes. 6.2, a resolution approving the proposed amendment, substantial amendment one to the city of Moline's 2023 annual action plan approved. By Council Bill Resolution Number 1102-2023 for the purpose of program funding reallocation and authorizing Ameris City Clerk to execute on the test of the program activities set forth. The city of Moline's 2023 Annual Action Plan, substantial amendment one upon the Department of Housing and Urban Development's approval of said amendment one.
Sure, I didn't do all the work on this, actually KJ did, but I can, I can highlight some of the, some of the items that are here, obviously, that's the reallocation of. Sure, I didn't do all the work on this. Actually KJ did, but I can, I can highlight some of the, some of the items that are here, obviously, that's the reallocation of around a hundred thousand dollars. And the changes appearing to page twenty-one in the budget oriented will click tonight. So Habitat Humanity. The Service Bureau, uh, Rent Utility Assistance Program. Administrative Cost and then the Homestead Program. Looking for new funding of a hundred and fifty and that basically is used for acquisition, rehabilitation, abandoned properties. But it's nicely aligned with what we're going to do with all the comprehensive housing programs in the city. I do guess every, this is a part of that. So it's gated once a path line to it.
We have to answer any questions?
There is not a motion yet.
Would you approve? Second?
Motion by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by, is that a program? Discussion, yes, Mr. Trump.
I'm kind of curious to know, this feels like we're double dipping with, uh, U C D C. So I'd kind of just like to hear a little bit about how. I don't want to be funding the same thing twice. And so how, how are these, these two things complementary to each other or different? So that we're not just doing the same thing in two different ways.
Are you talking about the overall amendment? Are you just talking about the homestead program?
Just the homestead program.
Um, with the homestead program, we're bringing in funds to continue what we did from L P two. And for stabilization program two. Or we acquired prober- I mean, acquired properties, rehab them, and then sold them to lower market. And individuals and families. And then we also constructed new homes. So now we have additional funding. So this brings in a pot of funding that we have from our C P two grant. Um, and brings in funds from C D G, creating the homestead program. And then brings me from program income. So we're looking to do one to two houses that we would acquire. We have that built into the budget and, uh, we would oversee the rehab of them. And then, uh, we would take care of that and then maybe use our home buyer program to buy those houses. So it's kind of like an all-around thing to create affordable housing. So we're continuing something that we've already started. Yeah. Before you answer, I wanted to say that that is a question I posed to the administrators. Over the weekend as well. And I'm very aware that, because I sit on the M C D C board. Um, that there has to be some kind of delineation between the differences in the programs and who's doing what and who's doing more or how it's being funded. Um, and I know that that conversation is upcoming, but it's extremely important that that is carved out. Because yeah, it would be a waste of all kinds of taxpayer dollars. Um, to fund something that's already being done someplace.
Try to avoid any kind of difficulties. That's really, I think. What, what we have to have. There's been a lot of transitions between C E D, F C D C, the land bank. There are a lot of competing interests, but complementary interests. And the question is striking a nice. And I think that's where we're. And I think, you know, I was going to ask KJ, is the house on the corner of Seventh Avenue and Twelfth Street an example where we used dollars in the past? There's something down, build something new and then sell it to a hell of a family.
Yeah. So when I first got hired back in two thousand and one. That was building nine one two and I actually shut down that building. Due to the condition of it. And from there, uh, we acquired grants, uh, one being the N S P grant and another one being the Attorney General's Grant. Where we demolished that property and then we constructed that new home among six or seven other ones. In Moline. And we did that all from our staff and C E D. So this is not something new to us. It's something that we're continuing to do. With the funding that we're going after, that we've been going after for twenty-five years now. So we have a bank of money and so. We'd like to create affordable housing for our community. So that's one of our purposes of going after the different grants. And now we have that pot of money from three different grants to bring that forward. And then we have those skills in our department to continue on what we've been doing all about. Okay, thank you.
I, I do want to just, I appreciate. So much that. Not only do you, does opportunity exist, but you're able to control who the buyer is and we're able to target the families that. Might be outbid in a traditional environment. So I think that this is a very important. Part of the housing conversation is making sure people who want to buy a house are. I just want to say.
Anything further from the council? Hearing, hearing none. All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Passes. Item six point three, a resolution approving the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-six strategic plan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Uh, for you tonight, it's the final version of the. Strategic Plan for Adoption for Twenty Twenty Four through fiscal twenty twenty-six. Uh, as you know, we started this process months ago and some sort of discussions shortly after some of you were elected. Now we continued some of that dialogue during a bunch of previous sessions at workshops. Um, I think what's important to note, um, there are goals that were included, obviously, in this plan. But, uh, I did miss not to report where we're at. I think that's really important to keep to realize we adopted a plan in twenty-one. Twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. And, uh, I'm proud to report that from these, uh, standpoint. That overall fifty percent of all the goals that were identified back in twenty-one. Uh, which led to the formation of the first plan are complete. Which is no small task, of course, that's where it goes to. And everyone in council as well as the policy directors and the staff. Because without you, the progress don't happen. Um, when we look at infrastructure, it was supposed to be. Principal responsibility inside the bigger plan, fifty-four percent of the projects are complete. And I will add, you're never done with the structure. The projects identified, fifty-four percent are complete. Thirty-three percent are underway. And near completion, only fourteen percent have messed up. I mean, we're not even done just back in here with the first strategic plan. In terms of the quality of place pillar, um. Seventy-seven of those goals were achieved, thirty-five percent are underway and near completion, and only twelve percent. Have been started. But again, I think it speaks well that the literature results is really what this administration, this council. Also just before that we're trying to achieve, I think we're there. Um, and then lastly, the economy. Uh, forty-three percent of that pillar is completed at this point, fifty-seven percent is underway. There is nothing that is not starting. So I expect that we'll start to see a lot of these. Uh, percentages go up and go into the completion calendar of fiscal twenty-four. Um. Rather than relabor everything that's in it, which is posted. The document I shared with you tonight is on line on the front page of the website. So. Those who are considered learning more, you know, as you're selling the budget, as you're explaining the budget. Um, even buying, budget is. Living document. It's not painted. So be attended with regularity during the year, twice a year. Uh, but a budget is not a tide. These plans are the guide. The budget is built around the plan. So when you look at the hundred forty-four million dollar budget that you're. Like by council, uh, this evening and going to. These plans, the budget just seems like a ship without, without a, a captain or a rower. Both of it wants to go. These plans guide all the spending that the city council goes. With policies to support and assistance with action of the budget. So this is what, this is what we use as our guide. If there's any questions, pray. Thank you.
Clear motion? Motion by Brian, seconded by Finch. Discussion. Okay, from the council. Um, I wanted to point out, while it's not complete. The broadband supplier, finding a broadband provider? I'm not sure if we listed it here because it's not technically complete. But in light of the budget discussion. I'm very, very thankful that that was accomplished because that extra fifteen to twenty million dollars that we would have to find. In our special projects fund or fund in our special projects fund would be next stone passable. So I appreciate the, the staff work. Um, especially our engineering staff who are continuing to make sure the project moves ahead. And Mr. Dykeason, who is part of that leadership team. Um, I think that's a significant accomplishment for the community and I just wanted to pause and mention that. Um. Secondly, I just wanted to, uh, mention, I had a very good discussion with a representative from the Berth five. Um, organization that's a state-funded. Program that's been researching, um, early tried to help education and care and barriers and this. Up to that, um, and one of the. Needs that was addressed that leads very closely to all the D E O work that. That portion of the strategic plan is language access. Or language barriers being a problem, um, for accessing many of the services within a city or a county. Um, and I know Mr. Mercedes has brought forward some language use tools. I just wanted to mention it as a. A place to not overlook when you're addressing that portion of the strategic plan, that there is, there are people we need to connect with. Um, who are interested in making sure we are living out that welcoming and existing environment that we often talk about in our beginning of strategic plan. Um, so, Lynn Jackson. Good. And anything further from the council? Hearing none, all in favor? Imposed? Motion passes. Six point four, an ordinance amending to after eight buildings and other construction and building services of the length of ordinances regarding rental housing licensing requirements. Including amendments to Article Seven, Division Two, Rental Housing Inspection Programming. Mr. Vitas?
Okay, here we go. Uh, Drake is here this evening because I know he has something to add to this, but, um. As we, as we look at the ordinance that was adopted and as you look at the budget as it was presented. We had a very specific formula in mind in terms of how we would, uh, create this licensing for. The landlords, which would lead that to a pay-as-you-go program. And the language within the ordinance, as it was adopted, came to light as we were. Evaluating going forward. And, uh, what that means is that the. Property, uh, the buildings themselves that are. That sit on a lot. Um. Would it actually be. Charged a hundred dollars? If there was two buildings, it would be two hundred dollars. Two buildings, three hundred. But we also have buildings that have multiple. Occupancies. So it implies that a lot. Actually have. Good charges to it. Um, if you had an apartment building. On charge of a hundred and fifteen dollars per unit. So it's a matter of how, how the language appears versus how it was presented. If anything, uh, leads to any other explanation you might have.
Yeah, it, uh, it, the whole story started with, uh, originally, uh, I. Part of what we were looking to do was to create a program that, uh, that fees equal the cost. So, uh, we created that. And, uh, we balanced them out and then, uh. As we were getting ready to move it forward, uh, Carol and her staff was gracious enough to say, but why don't we go through and make sure, okay? And so they did. And what they kind of helped to realize is that. What I didn't factor in for was, uh. Potential, uh, uh, inflated costs or inflation in the future. Uh, the changes in the employee cost as, as everybody gets raises. And all those factors that weren't factored in to my original, this is the base. So from there was where, uh, we all, we got together and we came up with this, uh. That making it a hundred dollars a building and fifteen dollars a year. Uh, first is what was originally, what was in the ordinance was the first unit was a hundred dollars. And that each unit thereafter would be fifteen dollars. So that, that's where it derived from. And so. That extra income would help to cover the cost in the future whenever we know. Two and three years from now, the costs are going to be going up. Uh. But, uh, what it actually probably means to the program is, uh, an increase in revenue would be approximately. Fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars for the single rentals. And, uh, multi-family would increase, uh, about seven thousand eighty dollars for the added fifteen dollars. And there would also be an increase with the, uh, uh, a hundred dollars per building. Because the buildings would be licensed with the units underneath it. Now, here's something that wasn't thought about at first is the way it's set up. Is that if you hold somebody's license potentially, there's the potential that. Everybody that is under that license or under that property, every building. Would have to be asked to, uh, to leave because they would not be licensed and they would not be able legally to rent. Properties now. Whereas if it's by, uh, building, then, okay, if we have a bad building, we can say, hey. We're pulling the license on this building. So then. Yes, we're going to have to relocate, find new places for everybody in that building. But if you have other buildings on this, uh, site that are in good condition, those people stay there. So that, that's something also that, that kind of helps get corrected through this. Um. And, and no matter what we do, there's a legal process. So it isn't just, you know, me saying you have to go. And whatever we do, the courts would identify the ones that say, hey, you know, you're out of it. So, uh, that, that's part of the dogs. So that, that's kind of where it's at. And then there's some other minor, uh, league or language. That was corrected, uh, that was, whatever was read over again by, uh, the attorneys to correct. It was very minor stuff. Uh, I. Legal versus law and things like that. And then the other thing that, uh, looking at doing is, uh, for everyone's information. Is to, uh, for right now, put, uh, for a short period of time, put the, uh. Penalty of for being, uh, late on your license, uh, to put that on hold. Because right now we're looking at putting it out in November. And the, and the licenses, the fees would be due by January first. That's really not paying for the people. Give them a chance to, to find out what they're supposed to do and how they're supposed to do it. And get those fees to us and those that. So, uh, that's why, uh, again, a short pause on that, we think, would be for the benefit of, uh, of the landlords and even for us.
Sir.
Motion by, uh, seconded by O'Brien.
Is it, is it safe to say that, that, you know, the, the extra costs? You mentioned covers, uh, covers wage increases, inflation, uh, things like that. It probably also helps us, uh, cover any, uh, deficit through non-compliance. Your models are built on a hundred percent compliance. We're never going to get that. So this helps prevent. The cost being on the taxpayer versus the actual landlords until. Is that a safe assumption?
You, you hit it right on the head. That, that's another in buildings.
Thank you. Under this revised fee structure, is anyone ever billed a hundred dollars? Would they automatically bill, bill one hundred?
Of course, single family, it would be, then it'd be a hundred.
So. I, I have a, I am. I'm not interested in putting forward that particular change. I have, I think that that is a. It becomes a misleading number by having the one, well, it's, you get two different fees. We're applying on the exact same thing. Um, and it, that, in that particular way, it does not make sense to me. The, the part of, well, we do want to identify separate buildings for. That part, that makes sense all over the pieces. Uh. I am very concerned about the idea of then just jumping to a hundred and fifteen. We're already looking at being one of the most expensive rental inspection programs in the. Area. And I think we need to do that because we're going to be the only one that's going to be fee-funded. Uh, but I also think that just as we're talking about these inflationary concerns, that inflationary concern is based on, I presume, a fully. Staff department down the road as opposed to the two positions we're starting with.
That, that's true.
That it, I. I think that we may find ourselves needing to adjust these fees up, but this feels very premature to me to be making a. E increase before we've implemented the program. I don't have any comment with the cleanup components of it, the increase to propose. Right? I'm curious to see if there's any other thoughts on that.
What?
I, I do have a thought. I, I think what you're saying, Mr. Schmidt, is that you may not be opposed to moving this forward, but that you should, in your opinion, you should be thinking about what that actual dollar change means as we go through first and second reading. But the reason I'm saying that is because I specifically asked this question over the weekend, um, of staff and was told something different, that this was just a scrivener's error and it didn't have to do with increased fees. I'm extremely disappointed because number two on my three, um, three uh operating principles is process. And, and while I appreciate that this is cleanup and we can do it this way, it really could have been done much more cleanly by having finance look at it ahead of time before the council saw it. Because now the council is being asked upon more money and increase more fees when we are in the process of a budget that increases fees. So I, I have to say that out loud because I expect better, because you can be better. Everybody, this, we have such a talented team. And I, I would have to say, um, I completely understand why the council might want to move this forward and I, I would probably agree that it should go forward, but you should really, really think hard about what the increased fee really means as we go into first and second reading if this passes. I apologize for having to say that on the floor. I think the staff knows I don't like to do that. Um, but it's, I, I must reinforce that process is extremely important. Because then we can avoid problems and the council voting on things they don't have the full information on. Thank you. Mr. Vitas?
I like this ordinance here at all because it is encouraging good landlords to come to Moline and hopefully discouraging bad landlords. Cause we've had a long history of that. We've had a long history of absentee landlords. And uh, you know, Kay was talking about that building that got torn down. She, she closed it down. I took the heat for it because it was a I don't know if it was an absentee landlord, but it was in terrible condition. And we don't want things to get that far again.
Thank you, Mr. Vitas. Anyone else? Mr. Vitas?
Uh, your honor, there was talk of um waiting or delaying the late fee. And I don't know, is that for the general ordinance?
No wait. No waiting, yeah, yeah, it's, it's.
I don't know. This question provided how, how that's going to be.
Well, it wouldn't need to be because it's an ordinance that serves, serves over a long period of time. It would just be an operational piece.
You can handle it at that staff level.
But I'm not a lawyer.
You could do that or we could put a special effective date for the penalty in the um ordinance uh amendment as they advance here. Say that one more time. So we could hand that up, you know, procedurally or we could include a six month delay and the effective date of the penalty um in the next draft of the ordinance as it proceeds to come so.
All right. So that's an amendment that could be made at any time.
Right. And we could bring that back when it appears for first read.
Got it.
But I, I would just like to speak on the increased fees. I understand the, the pressure that we went from a hundred dollars for a single family, now effectively one fifteen. We're already more expensive than uh, they bring municipalities. I personally um am okay with that. I would be okay if our fees were two hundred a month. And that's because we're over rented in the city already, which is a, a symptom of predatory buying that happened when inflation rates were so low. If this can weed out five percent of those landlords because the, the cost is too burdensome. I'm frankly okay with that. Um, and that's just my personal opinion and that's how I'll vote. The fifteen dollar extra fee per unit does not affect me that much. If this makes or breaks a landlord, then they're probably on their way out. We can identify her. I, I understand wanting to go after troublesome landlords and using this as a mechanism, which we have good and worst city of Moline, but my fear is that when you add more and more fees, it's those large conglomerates of absentee landlords who are not paying attention to their properties, who can absorb those larger costs. And that we're really only deterring smaller local landlords who are more likely to actually care because it might be the house down the street or the house they lived in. I, I do, um, I think there are other avenues that are more likely to be successful there. Uh, the time I'll make an amendment to replace the language application fee for each dwelling unit within the occupied building to strike and replace that with application fee for each additional dwelling unit within the occupied building.
All right. Is there a second to that amendment? Uh, seeing none, that fails for lack of a second. All right. Anything further from council?
I would like to make an amendment to uh make the effective uh late application, uh, the, the effective date for the late fees, uh, June first, twenty twenty four. July, I, I guess that would make more sense. I apologize, July, stick on July first, July.
Okay. Everyone understands this amendment to make the effective late fee date? Yeah, July one, twenty. There are second to that motion. Oh, second, second by Finch. Discussion of the amendment. Hearing none, uh.
I guess I would just ask, what, why again, is that late?
Uh, this, uh, this is primarily, this is a new program. It's going to take landlords a little while to get used to it. Uh, if we send out the letters, uh, the end of this month, they will only have five weeks to really become compliant. We're giving the people grace in order to just understand it. Uh, we're so interested in collecting the fees. I don't think we should be delaying the collection.
All right. Um, I would say, do we know what the fiscal impact is of waiting that long? We don't because we don't know who would be not complying.
Excuse me. So uh, here's, here's the way I kind of thought it through. And one is the fact that we really get factored in uh late fees, we minorly in, into the budget and also uh figuring in uh our, our other fees in trip. Because looking at all the other cities, most of the time, we, we use those as tools to get to compliance. You know, we use tools as, would you rather have a seven hundred and fifty dollar fine or would you rather fix all the air open windows? You know, so, so we use it as a tool and a toolbox. Uh, but uh, uh, again, because of that, the, the the fees, you know, the late fees probably would not matter at all.
I, I would like to ask Ms. Barnes, can we load this program? You know, starting in January one, if there is the, there are these late submissions. Is there or we are, deserve somewhere to make it happen?
Because like the salaries that are coming on board and hiring, that will be over the course of the year.
Okay.
And even if the applications come in a little bit late, actually, we'll still be submission. Okay, thank you.
That's true.
I was just gonna say, I probably am gonna go ahead and vote for it. I'm a little bit disappointed that it came the way that it did. Just, I would have liked to have a little bit more time to kind of um wrap my head around all of it. And I think that what I would really be interested in, you said that you had um, had finance take a look at the number. I would like, I mean, I'd be interested to see what those actually look like, what the comparisons were, that they actually, you know, came up with that, you know, why we needed to have that increase.
Yeah. And, and that, that did happen uh before we brought it to you originally. Uh, yeah, Carol Keith. And uh, we had a meeting, we went through it and that's where they, this got brought up. And it was probably mostly just a problem of wanting to make a last minute change to the uh ordinance before it went to council. And we were pushing really hard to get things done and if there was no site and that, that's it. I should proofread it and I uh, I did. And I, uh, it's amazing how a couple of words uh can mean a lot. So.
Thank you. We understand. Um, I would say we will have time to get more information as you're asking.
Yeah.
Because we skipped two weeks till the first reading if this passed. Yeah.
And I would like to just confirm, we put, they say, the total dollar amount of the total funding and revenue, the intent was always the way it was originally presented. It was just a couple of the words in the ordinance needed to be shored up for the, for the way that the calculations were being made. It was not additional revenue.
Okay. So thank you for clarifying that so much. These are wrong thing. Because the way it was presented tonight was increased revenue. And that we need to go on record as what's correct here. Yes.
I'm sorry, it's never been presented that way before. It was always one hundred dollars for single payment. That is simply not the case.
She's talking about the total. She's talking about the total cost of the program.
Okay, but the ordinance before us this evening increases the revenue. It, it takes a program we approved months ago and adds an additional fee. And it, and to say anything other than that is, is obvious.
Staff is really going to have to clarify that first because I've now pointed it out. It's been stated one way. It has to be clear to the council. What you mean?
Uh, back to the amendment.
Yes, thank you. Um, but allowed the discussion because it's related to cost.
The um, it just, the, the, the idea here is that we're only if you, if it takes you six months to send in your application, it is still effective January first. So we're not, we're not losing revenue. It, it might be delayed by a, a incentive mechanism not being present, but the revenue itself is still going to be actualized. We're not, in theory, by removing uh, the, the late fee for six months, we are not, that should not negatively impact revenue.
And actually, uh, again, ordinance is passed. So let's say we had a bad actor out. You have to, you're, you're supposed to have it. We're just not charging a late fee. The fees, you're right, it's still supposed to be there. And if you aren't, you know, as a tool, uh, we can still take them to municipal court and, and leverage them to, uh, you know, correct and do the right thing. So we, we still have tools, you know, let's uh, get them to uh, the bad actors to comply. And we're being nice to the, to the people that are, and are the good, good landlords.
Okay. So the council needs to vote on this amendment about the effective date for the late fees. Then we go back to this idea. All in favor? Yes, Mr. Vitas?
We make the, the delay in the late fees since this is an ordinance only for the twenty four, that, and that be on by the dead time we will have, stand in place and the process will have more.
Clear, clear, yeah, we. I want to hear your input.
Would you like to withdraw or modify a motion?
Your honor, it is my understanding I said twenty twenty four in my original motion.
You just said you want to make the effective late fee date July one, twenty twenty four.
Then, your honor, I would like to modify my motion to include the year twenty twenty four.
All right. According to my handy, handy chart, Mr. Stappelis, that is not debatable, but it is amendable and there is a majority vote required. Yeah. Okay.
So, your honor, I would like to amend my uh amendment to include the year twenty five. Well, modify my amendment to include the year twenty twenty four.
Okay. Motion. So, give a second. Goodbye, Chris. All right. Not the final, amendable, all in favor?
Uh, uh.
Any opposed? All right, that amendment passes.
Your honor, we just voted on the modification, correct?
Yeah, I, I meant that. Amendment to, I didn't say motion. Okay, yes, modification. Good Lord, people. Let's back to the motion on the floor. As amended, I would counsel this council that uh, there is time to get your further clarification. So what you would be voting on is, in some eyes, some of the way you've expressed things, an imperfect um ordinance. Right? Like it's, we have imperfect or un, incomplete information for us, but there are two more readings where we can get all that and there is time. I just wanted to put it out there. So, if there's nothing further, discussion wise, all in favor of this motion as amended?
Uh, your honor.
Say what you want. Is it a port of order, plain of order or what?
Yes, port of order. We did not vote on the amendment.
Oh, correct. Now I understand what you're saying. Ms. Kostopoulos.
Yes.
Needs you to help keep me on track.
Yes.
Sorry. So we, we voted on to modify his amendment. Now we are on to the amendment. Which is to include this late fee as described, or late fee acceptance. Exactly, yes. All in favor of that?
Uh.
Any opposed? All right, that amendment passes. Um, now we're back to the motion as amended. Anything for the voting. Hearing none, all in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed?
None.
Right, that motion passes seven and one. Okay, thank you for hearing through the details there. Thank you, staff. Um, we'll look forward to some updated information this next round. Um, six point five, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attachment contract with regular mechanical aid for the water treatment plant boiler replacement project for the amount of hundred eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and authorizing the director of utilities to execute any necessary documents related to this.
A little bit of room.
Start that. Motion by Brian, seconded by Finch. Or?
The, the briefly, this is a boiler that failed based on electrical panel that, that actually failed and fronted out and it's probably by actual test. Wow. That's a good, that is. Not all over.
All right, um, there's nothing further, all in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We move to our informational. One point one, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-seven, purchasing section twenty-seven dash thirty-one hundred, competitive sealed bidding of the Moline Code ordinance in by retailing subsection C, bid evaluation, recommendation and acceptance in its entirety and enacting a merger of one new subsection C dealing with the same subject matter. And this over to Mr. Schmidt and Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, your honor. Um, this is an ordinance that's kind of going after a few things, really reacting to uh some poor contractors and poor contractors who work, we've experienced in the city uh over this last construction season, looking at opportunities where in several of those cases, um, issues that were brought up in the responsible bidder ordinance that were said that actually under the language of our responsible bidder ordinance, it was okay to kind of flex around those things. And we've seen that there have been very negative consequences to some of those things. Uh, so I want to shore up that language to make that so it is uh taking away some of the latitude given to other portions of um of our operation and keep that wrapped in the hands of the city council. The other, uh, the other issue here is kind of addressing that, saying, it is to look and having public works, all projects that are being done over a certain size to be using a private labor agreement, uh, in this case, specifically the ill with impact. Uh, we have used those on some projects in the city. Um, it has not been applied as consistently as I would like to see. It is something that um has a lot of opportunity to help with uh pre-planning and steps upfront by having meetings and ensures to, that, that work stoppages will not impact the work. And ensure that contractors who come in from anywhere, right, union, non-union, whoever wants to work and it comes into this agreement will then have access to local labor to supplement their workforce. Uh, so even, we don't usually, wouldn't be able to pull help from the local halls, would have that ability under an impacted regal. That's one of the terms and one of the ways to keep things moving. So it is uh, just a way to help ensure we're getting high level of quality craftsmanship. We're keeping local uh people involved in that process and ensuring that we're investing in our, our workforce. People involved in that process and ensuring that we're investing in our our workforce, which has always been. Us.
Any questions from the council? Alright, I guess we'll move on to seven point two, budget work session number three. Uh oh, well, hang on, so just to clarify, just as we have done um with other ordinance updates, this will come back to first reading. I guess. At the next meeting.
Your Honor, I move this to spend the rolls to allow for voting on amendments in the proposed budget.
Great, um, move a second. That's Timmy and and Schmidt, um this is the same thing we did last week. Um, or last time we met. Um. I need you, I need you, unanimous and roll call please. Older person, Timmy and.
Hi.
Finch, uh O'Brien.
Hi.
Castro, hi, Schmidt.
Hi.
Murphy.
Hi.
Messias.
Hi.
Rizak.
Hi.
Alright, that motion passes, uh. So we suspended the rolls, let's continue as we have previously, budget work session number three, Ms. Parks.
Thank you, Your Honor. In your agenda online, you do have two options for budget work session tonight and we are hanging out hard copies as well. Let's, I told you, then showing that we basically have one remaining outstanding budget item. And that is regarding which option hit the front end. For funding of our newly created special capital projects fund. And the main focus. What everybody's. Well, there's two options.
Those impactors, I thought I showed this.
These are all option one.
Sorry, one second. Rizak.
Okay, we better give that time. Yes, alright. We have two options, I think our last outstanding budget item, we were holding out other questions as well, but. Main focus, um, and we look at these two options, we're gonna focus primarily on the year twenty twenty four, because that implies the old hand that we do have to. However, as you know, we are working on a three-year budget, so in addition to twenty four, we like to look at twenty four and twenty five and twenty six. The remaining years on this ten-year plan. Basically provides an excellent planning tool for the future and every year as we come forward. And it shifted a year and we'll continue to revise it and move it and change it with input from council. So the two options that are in front of you tonight, option number one. Basically, it's a slower phased in implementation of our franchise fees. We've been had option one in front of them. The motion that had been made previously and which this one shows. Is a one and a half percent franchise fee implemented February first of twenty four. That hold standing from twenty five and then an additional one and a half of three percent would be implemented January one of twenty fifth. The outer years, again, like I say, we're gonna continue to work with those over the years. We have talked largely that um we've got the fire station, which is one of the biggest items in the room. Um, we've got some tennis court remodeling or or improvements that are out there in the year twenty twenty nine. Right now, based on the information that we've got in front of us. We may be needing additional increases in franchise as soon as um twenty eight and twenty nine. That we move through the year and we have to see, you know, how much revenue that's with. The total dollars could, you know, that the whole plan would be updated at that time, we just really wanna focus on twenty four, twenty five and twenty six. So then if we look at option number two. The projects are primarily in the same place, but option number two would be implementing franchise fee a little faster. At one percent, two percent and three percent in the first three years and then four and five um in 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 the next. Following two years, option number two, over a ten-year period would provide an additional one point two million dollars of revenue. But again, it's not necessarily moving, would not moving up the fire station, that fire station would still be funded um in the year twenty seventeen.
There is no, whether we go to one, two, three, or one point five, one point five, three. Those first three years are the exact same. I understand that realistically they would shift slightly, but.
But in total, by the end of the years, it would be roughly the same.
Right, and and that's shown here.
Yes.
So you're only asking us about the years twenty twenty seven and beyond?
No, no. It's it's which model do we use for the ten-year primarily to focus on the first three years, which is our three-year budget we're talking about now, twenty four, twenty five, twenty six. Knowing that future fee increases in a year could potentially come for council for consideration.
I'm confused why option one is not what we directed in our last meeting of three percent perpetuity. I mean, I understand we have left that door open for increases, but. I and I I have said, as I remain, that I will not vote for anything that even models that as the primary path. Well, I I believe we should be looking at, this is what, did it stay at that three versus what needs to come after?
Yeah, Mr. Schmidt, she just explained that really it's just about year one, two and three, the difference between one point five for two years and then three at one year. Or one, two and three, you know, each year successive, that's what this really is, there's nothing that's been changed about what's already been voted on at all. About those first three years. I would, I'm interested in what the council has to say, Mr.
I I understand that the desire want to ramp up, I think that that's psychologically really good. Uh, on the contrary, having a flat fee one year and the second year being very predictable is also very good. So I I'm a better fan of option. Uh one, uh just so that the fee is the same for both years and um. Uh understanding we might have to adjust it in the future.
To be clear, uh you basically you're a fan of what we've already.
Which is one point five, one point five.
So, I would like to point out that I think um. While taking the budget hearing, you showed how, you know, we were going to be um in a sense taking less. Um or asking less of our um residents for the next three years after this year, we have a bit of a bump of average of twenty five dollars. On property tax wise and then taking, you know, the total bills coming in less those years. Um yet we are increasing fees, I think there's gotta be something that doesn't increase. Year after next, and so keeping the plan that we've already um. Agreed to of one point five, one point five and then three is much more fair to our. Yes, Mr. Ryan?
I like them both, it's already choose. But uh, I agree with Alden and Timmy and I think after one is probably. You know, both keep up with what we need to get done. With the comments and everything, I don't see anything wrong with either one of these, but I'll I'll go with option one.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to adopt option one, sir.
I need a point of clarification.
Uh.
The order I need to. I'll bring it up in discussion, sorry, it's been a motion and seconded, it's motion by Timmy and seconded by O'Brien.
Clarification being, I.
Being, she has added four and five on this option one, which is not what we've already been, I don't think you need a motion at all right now because we've already adopted something.
That's correct, I withdraw my motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Makes sense, everybody clear, if you're not changing anything, we pretty good unless someone has an objection to one point five, one point five, three. Okay. Thank you, is there anything further under the budget to discuss? At this point, I I did identify one thing. That's the point, I just hit me while we were going through the um budget hearing, um. The budget includes modifications to city hall. And I think that the council should think as we go into the final adoption meeting on the twenty first. Is all of that money necessary in this budget in twenty twenty four? I know we're talking about safety issues, but they are issues that impact me when it comes to safety in this building that impact um our staff. I just think that we have cut out everything we thought we could cut out. But as I looked at that tonight, I thought, oh, maybe I need to take another look at that particular item of of base to city hall. And so I'm jumping in and helping to do council with feedback.
Um, just some numbers and I. I've said this before, but not with detail. As we go forward throughout the year, every extra million dollars we save for the fire department and we don't have to bond for. Saves us at the rates projected, saves us one point four million dollars over the life of this twenty year loan. At seventy three, three nine three seventy seven per year. That is money saved and then that also lowers our principal, which that is that two million dollar going from years twenty six onward. So. As much money as we can save lowers the need, not only for us to bond for more, but also to pay P and I. So that decreases our need to increase franchise fees. So as we are going into future years and any excess funds that we had windfall, I I strongly suggest we put it into this fund. To reduce our bonding amount for better reason.
I did note that I hope the council noted, uh the public noted that the our debt service will be done in seven to ten years and that that is a. And it's a remarkable achievement, um which I'm very, very thankful for, but if we were to. Right, try to bond for all of these projects with more money than or or with less money and principal. It would. It would stymie future councils from what they intend to do done and and so I wanna stress. For the public that this is a budget that is not only about budgeting this year, but it is financial planning for the future. And it's really tough to make that decision, but we are going to look at Moline, hopefully its potential. Not just next year, but into the future, it. It's very necessary. Thank you. There's nothing further from the council?
Okay, we'll move to the next item, November status information.
Yes, very, very briefly, Mayor of Council. My agenda before he's in November. He said information before the ball activity, three D end device, all of this this year. As you can see, there's a number of projects or programs that were created, one being a fully cap, full inclusion, one is the cash right, salt and pork. Which, as you know, started a year ago. Uh, the offices, the fundraiser, the hall repair program grant was awarded to C E D, John Kennedy's program, two grand awards also awarded to C E D. Uh, kudos to them for going after those grants. Three K and parking program, this one is alley reconstruction, both blue engineering and alley complete. Uh, and natural parks, they're a great uh great end of the uh construction season completion. Work at Stevens Park, including uh basketball, major soccer courts, grading and asphalting. As well as the park playground, so if you get a chance, I provide it all the time, you know, stop at the parking lot, take a walk, have a nice walk this fall. Get the leaves around a little bit, see how nice it is over at Stevens Park. And then, of course, taking possession of the rescue vehicles. At wrong back doors, uh which was authorized as a purchase uh for the police department. And that's it, I report this to the questions.
Thank you from the council. Yes, Mr. Smith.
Worldliner, um, do track for the union, doesn't have a K F B. That's when you have.
It's C. It's your name, it's C.
It is, it's a K.
Thank you, sir. You're correcting my Facebook posts, the spellings as well, you're on a roll.
If I ever make him sick on Facebook, please.
I sure will.
Thank you, there's nothing further, we'll call the regular council meetings in order, pledge allegiance, please. Pledge of allegiance to the. Other understands, on that nation. Timmy, do you have an improvement?
I do not.
Roll call please. Older person, Murphy.
Hi, Ben.
Messias.
Present.
Rizak.
Present.
Timmy and.
Present.
Finch.
President.
O'Brien.
President.
Castro.
President.
Schmidt.
Present.
Your Honor, I request the approval of council meeting minutes of October twenty one, twenty twenty three and committee of the whole council and executive session meeting minutes of October twenty four, twenty twenty three. Alright, that's Finch and Rizak. Roll call please, older person, Timmy and.
Hi.
Finch, I'm O'Brien.
Hi.
Castro.
Hi.
Schmidt.
Hi.
Murphy.
Hi.
Messias.
Hi.
Rizak.
Hi.
Eight eyes, no names, that motion carries. Non-consent agenda, second reading ordinances, item fourteen point one, an ordinance involving the special text allocation fund. Terminating the designation of the South Park Mall redevelopment project area, tip number eight, within the city of Moline, Rockland County, Illinois.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by O'Brien, seconded by Finch. Hearing none, roll call please, older person, Timmy and.
Hi.
Finch, I'm O'Brien. Castro.
Hi.
Schmidt.
Hi.
Murphy.
Hi.
Messias.
Hi.
Rizak.
Hi.
Eight eyes, no names, that motion carries. Item fourteen point two, an ordinance dissolving the special text allocation fund and terminating the designation of the Route Six, left one fifty redevelopment project area. Tip number nine, within the city of Moline, Rockland County, nine. Motion to approve.
Sir.
Motion by Finch, seconded by O'Brien. Hearing none, roll call please, older person, Timmy and.
Hi.
Finch, I'm O'Brien.
Hi.
Castro.
Hi.
Schmidt.
Hi.
Murphy.
Hi.
Messias.
Hi.
Rizak.
Hi.
Eight eyes, no names, that motion carries. Non-consent agenda resolutions. Eight point one, a resolution authorizing a change in the city's constitution to visit all cities.
Please approve.
Second. Motion by Timmy and seconded by Schmidt. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call please, older person, Timmy and.
Hi.
Finch, I'm O'Brien.
Hi.
Castro.
Hi.
Schmidt.
Hi.
Murphy.
Hi.
Messias.
Hi.
Rizak.
Hi.
Eight eyes, no names, that motion carries. Item fifteen point two, a resolution approving the collection of franchise fees for Mid-American Energy Company for natural gas and electric system. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Murphy. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call please, older person, Timmy and.
Hi.
Finch, I'm O'Brien.
Hi.
Castro.
Hi.
Schmidt.
Hi.
Murphy.
Um.
Messias.
Hi.
Rizak.
Hi.
Eight eyes, no names, that motion carries. Item number fifteen point three, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to an administrative services agreement. By in between the city of Moline and Renew Moline Inc. and authorizing Renew Moline Inc. to administer the Moline Center Fund.
Okay, go through.
Second. Motion by Messias, seconded by Finch, discussion. Hearing none, roll call please, older person, Timmy and.
Hi.
Finch, I'm O'Brien.
Hi.
Castro.
Hi.
Schmidt.
Hi.
Murphy.
Hi.
Messias.
Hi.
Rizak.
Hi.
Eight eyes, no names, that motion carries, item number fifteen point four, a resolution granting a variance to chapter thirteen. Of hazard prevention of the Moline code ordinances, section thirteen dash one one zero six, protecting buildings to allow the property at two two five fiftieth street. And to construct a twenty four foot by twenty four foot accessory building, not ranging the lowest floor above the base blood elevation. And as a condition of approval, requiring the petitioner slash property owner to construct the accessory building with the proper blood vents and be able to resist flotation.
I'm glad, true.
Second. By Rizak, seconded by Finch. Uh, discussion. Hearing none, roll call please, older person, Timmy and.
Hi.
Finch, I'm O'Brien.
Hi.
Castro.
Hi.
Schmidt.
Hi.
Murphy.
Hi.
Messias.
Hi.
Rizak.
Hi.
Eight eyes, no names, that motion carries, non-consent agenda, first reading ordinances. An ordinance amending chapter thirty one taxation of the Moline code ordinances by repealing chapter thirty one in its entirety. And enacting in lieu thereof one chapter thirty one dealing with the same subject matter. And authorizing the increase of the amusement tax from five percent to ten percent effective January one, twenty twenty four. Motion to advance to second reading.
Sir.
Should I finish, seconded by O'Brien, discussion. Hearing none, roll call please, older person, Timmy and.
Hi.
Finch.
Hi.
O'Brien.
Hi.
Castro.
Hi.
Schmidt.
Hi.
Murphy.
Hi.
Messias.
Hi.
Rizak.
Hi.
Eight eyes, no names, motion advanced to second reading carries. Item number sixteen point two, an ordinance levying. Item number sixteen point two and ordinance levying and assessing taxes for the city of Moline, Illinois for the tax levy year twenty twenty three collectible in the year twenty twenty four and enacting an ordinance relating to the same subject matter. Motion to advance to second reading.
Second.
Motion by Castro, seconded by Timmy and. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call please. Holder person, Timmy and Finch, I'm O'Brien.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Eight eyes, no nays, motion to advance to second reading carries. Item number sixteen point three and ordinance levying a special ad valorem tax within the city of Moline, Illinois, special services, service area number five, the city of Moline, Illinois. Motion to advance to second reading.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Macias. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call please. Holder person, Timmy and Finch, I'm O'Brien.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Eight eyes, no nays, motion to advance to second reading carries. Item number sixteen point four and ordinance levying a special ad valorem tax within the city of Moline, Illinois special service area number six of the city of Moline, Illinois.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Or motion to pass that?
Thank you. That's Macias and Castro. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call please. Holder person, Timmy and Finch, I'm O'Brien.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Eight eyes, no nays, motion to advance to second reading carries. Item number sixteen point five and ordinance amending chapter eight, building, buildings and other construction and building services of the Moline Code of ordinances regarding rental housing licensing requirements, including amendments to article seven, division two, rental housing inspection program.
Motion to advance to second reading.
Second. Motion by Timmy and seconded by Razak. Discussion? This is that list. We, as we were discussing it during COW, I mentioned there was time, forgetting that we had said that it would, that it was moving ahead to first reading. So I just wanted to apologize to the council. Uh, there still is time because second reading will be in two weeks, but just wanted to make note that. So this is actually presented as amended, correct? This. So any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please. Holder person, Timmy and Finch, I'm O'Brien.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Nay.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Seven eyes, one nay, motion to advance to second reading carries. And that is all I have with evening, Your Honor. Thank you very much. All right, we're onto this lady's business. I wanted to just remind council and thank, um, all of this and Castro for being, um, as men, I consider my body double. This, this week, uh, as I head off, uh, to represent Moline at a conference, um, people confuse us all the time. Um, but she's actually mayor pro temp for this month. And so she's going to quite a few events this week. There's the um, Rouse Consulting, ribbon cutting for their mural. Veterans Day that I emailed you about today. Three or four other things I can't remember. Yeah, Arsenal, lots and lots of things. So thank you so much. Um, as I mentioned, I will be representing the city, um, at the Mayor's Institute for City Design. It's a um, program sponsored jointly by the National Endowment for the Arts and the U.S. Conference of Mayors. It's an all-expense paid um, conference to, uh, get wonderful feedback from development experts, um, on a very particular project at a city. And thank you to Matthias and Miss Elias for helping prep that. Um, we had to prep three different project options and they chose the South Park Mall. Um, so I will be presenting on the history of that, the history of our town, um, and trying to get some great ideas, especially considering we just close the tip. Um, and we don't own, you know, the mall properties on five, so, um, I'm looking forward to that, um, work. And that is all I have. It's Murphy.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Macias.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Your Honor, I would like to thank the staff, uh, you guys called out the, uh, fiber net. Fiber internet. Um, I just had it installed. So I, I, it's great. It's great so far. Uh, my neighborhood is slowly getting wired up. Um, it is a long process. Every house has to be individually done. But I've already heard nothing but great feedback from all those who have received it and the fact that we did it without any cost to the taxpayers.
O'Brien?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
He does.
Nothing.
Any other staff? Yes.
Just want to tell her you come out to Holly out this weekend.
Oh, yeah. Yes, holiday hop this weekend. I probably just cannot be there, but you know. Yeah, you will, you will, you'll be there.
Yeah, I do. Uh, just to know. Oh, I'm not a police power. So it's ready to go. Yeah. Uh, those lights should go on simultaneously while there goes the switch and lighting of the cars, which will be a little traditional. So, because we'll be going on. I'm not sure what the lights will be. I'm asking, I have to be surprised.
That's Friday night.
Saturday. You got your next.
Um, any other staff? Well, thank you very much. We have a public comment next. Anybody for a public comment? All right. Executive session.
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purposes of discussion. Property acquisition dash five I L C S one twenty signs two three five. Ending probable or imminent litigation dash five I L C S one twenty signs two three eleven.
Motion by Murphy, seconded by Schmidt. Roll, roll call please. Holder person, Timmy and Finch.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
O'Brien. Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
All right. We are going to the post session. Thank you very.